Okay, well, it is six o'clock right now. I know there's some people that are still logging on and getting going, but make sure that I'm not muted. But welcome to Silverton High School's third town hall going into the 2020-2021 school year. This one's gonna be a little bit, little bit shorter of a presentation by, by us. Couple of things. First of all, before I get started, I want to make sure that Johnny Pharoah and James Rize are, are recognized and welcomed here. They're gonna be here to help us answer some questions that might be a little bit more up their alley as far as the questions that might be directed or concerned. I'm also want to let everybody know that we are recording this session, so just so everybody's aware of that. Back to the welcome. Welcome to our third town hall. This one is gonna be a little bit shorter as far as our presentation is concerned, and a little bit more open to, to answering questions. We have received a few questions already relative to our town hall this evening. We posted those questions up here as far as on our slideshow. Give everybody an opportunity to take a look at those. We will work our way through those questions and then take any questions from, from people that are watching at this point right now. Do you want to share just one quick thing? Just got a timely text message from a, from a good friend relative to this school year, and I, and I really appreciated this thing coming through. And I know, I know a lot of people have a very positive perspective and a very positive outlook, but she sent me a text and said, "Let's give this school year the opportunity to be awesome." Don't throw a label on it or judge, or be judgmental before it begins. It may just surprise us in beautiful ways. And I think that's a really good reminder for all of us right now. I know there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. There's a lot of anxiety that exists out there. We're, we're gonna do our best to, to put that at ease just by being able to answer your questions, but also know that, that that's also gonna be part of the process going forward. This is an unusual year. This is something that we are not all used to. Something that we're gonna have to get used to as we, as we work our way through it, and it's gonna become more and more comfortable as we, as we dig into it and begin to find our comfort zones going through it. So just, you know, be prepared for a great opportunity for, for something new. And I think that's, uh, that's always, that's always a fun, a fun adventure. So to begin with, a quick outline of where we're gonna go this evening, perhaps. There we go. And we're gonna give you an updated draft schedule. That draft schedule is gonna be relative to our hybrid schedule in the distance learning. So we've got an updated schedule as far as that's concerned. This will be the third of those drafts you will have seen. We've kind of gone to one end, from one end of the spectrum to the other, other end of the spectrum, continue to get feedback, continue to hear from parents, continue to hear from teachers and students and feel like now we're at a point that maybe some times might be adjusted or, or something along those lines, but feel like we're really close to where we're gonna be. We're gonna give you an update on the online option. There was some information that was given out last week that we're going to update and correct for you this week. Give you some updates on activities and athletics, and then we'll get into your questions. So as far as the draft schedule is concerned, now, mind you, this, this schedule that you're looking at right here is from a teacher perspective, but I'm gonna try and kind of walk you through it. Mondays are gonna be time for our teachers to work with students, to have IEP and 504 meetings, to have prep time, to do their own PLCs. There will be stuff that will be pushed out to students that they'll have some opportunities, some, some applied learning and individual classes and some academic opportunities that'll be pushed out by the teachers on that day, but they will not actually have any meetings on those days. On Tuesdays, classes would begin for students, live synchronous opportunities, instructional opportunities for students would begin at 9:00 AM. And on Tuesdays, it would be their first period class and their third period class. I want to remind everybody right now that we created an eight-period schedule. Periods one, three, five, and seven will be the first half of the year, and periods two, four, six, and eight will be the second half of the year. So this schedule is just reflective of the courses that students will be taking for the first half of the year. So again, on Tuesdays at nine o'clock, they would be in period one. On Tuesdays at 11 o'clock, they would be in, in period three, and those would be a live synchronous opportunity at those times. On Wednesdays, their nine o'clock opportunity would be for period five, their 11 o'clock opportunity would be for period seven. And then on Thursdays, we'd have periods one and three again. On Fridays, we would have periods five and seven again. So this would be for the distance learning in the hybrid model. When we came back live, it would look a little bit different than that. But this, this is kind of what we would be looking at for our schedule. Students would have two live synchronous opportunities a day and ultimately have eight live synchronous opportunities a week, two of them in each of their courses. So this is our updated schedule. Again, this, this reflects a little bit more of the, the teacher schedule right here, but you get a pretty good idea of where the, where the students would be getting their live synchronous opportunities. This is, this is, received some pretty good feedback from really most everybody that we've had an opportunity to show it to at this point. We certainly welcome your feedback from it as well. If you've got questions about it, please, please let us know. But just based on the feedback that we've gotten at this point relative to the other two schedules that we've already kind of sent out, we think this, this is pretty close to where we're gonna end up being as far as our distance learning for the hybrid model is concerned. Mr. Rice, do you have some? You know what? I just, I skipped a slide there, I think. There was supposed to be an update on our online options right there. So I'm gonna leave this up right here. Last week, we had a conversation with you relative to our online school and it being its own separate school. It would have its own state identification number, school identification number. And it was gonna have some serious implications for our transfers. It was gonna have some serious implications for our students that were involved in athletics and activities. As it turned out, the, the guidance relative to that piece was misinterpreted, and our online school does not have to be its own school, which is very, very good news. It means that anybody that is, that is enrolled with Silverton High School right now, whether a transfer student or otherwise, is still one of our students. If they decide to do our online school, they are still a Silverton High School student. That is simply an expanded option and an expanded program offered by Silverton High School. So the information that we gave you last week, we apologize, but it was inaccurate information. And the information that you've gotten prior to all of that, that the online school was an extension of our programs, that is the accurate information. So just want to clear all of that up for everybody. If you are a transfer student or a parent of a transfer student, there is no need to be reapplying to transfer to get into our online school. And, and your student is still fully eligible for all Silverton High School athletics and activities. And that takes Mr. Rice to activities and athletics updates.
Thank you, Mr. Lockett. I just wanted to chime in real quick. Last night, myself and my secretary Val, we hosted our first athletics and activities Q and A session. It was geared mainly towards our registration process, but I just wanted to share out with folks again that please be paying attention to the athletics website. We plan to do that again. Most likely, it will not be next week, but we are thinking in two weeks. So just want to give a thank you to those that joined us last night and had some good conversation about the, about the process to register for athletics and activities for this year and what the, what the athletic year could potentially look, look like. So just kind of wanted to touch base and, and let folks know that we plan to have another one of those in a couple of weeks. So keep an eye out for those. We're hoping that not only will it be on the website, but that our coaches are forwarding that information out as well. If you have any questions at any time, feel free to email and/or call us here at the athletic office. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. As moving forward at this point right now, we're about to jump into some questions. Just to give you a quick update on where we're at with, with staff in service. We do begin that in-service next week. Our, our teachers will be coming back. Teachers and, and support staff will be coming back a little bit later on in the week as well. We are extending our in-service for an additional week, which is why school isn't beginning until September 14th. And that is to get, give our staffs an opportunity to become accustomed with a couple of new processes, a couple of new platforms as far as digital learning is concerned or, or virtual learning is concerned. And through that process, we're also gonna be making sure that we get a plan put together. It's already in the works for parent onboarding, student onboarding, so that that information is out to you before students are, are gonna be asked to be responsible for any of their coursework or anything like that. So we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Everybody understands how the technology works. Everybody understands what the expectations are. And so we're gonna make sure that we get all of that stuff in over the next couple of weeks and, and just with the uniqueness of our circumstances, it just, it's gonna take us a little bit more time than it has in the past. So just want to make sure everybody's updated on that as well. We've already had a few questions that have come in as far as the Q and A are concerned through this presentation, but we've also got some, some questions that had been sent prior. And so we're gonna start with those. How will you run the four-by-four schedule model so that it focuses on learning rather than just getting work done? How will the structure help with retaining information? And then question number two, how will language classes like Spanish or French operate in this system? Learning languages depends on consistency and practice. How can we accommodate the differences between nine months of consistent learning versus half of, half a year of learning? I think these are pretty similar questions right here. And I think, you know, the difficulty is, is really in that, you know, when we are trying to create a schedule here, there, there are certain things that, that you know, just, just have to give as, as far as this stuff is concerned, and that's just the real, the real, the real hard truth. Now, when it comes to the content, when it comes to the material, do we feel like we're gonna be able to get all of that material in? We do. We believe we're gonna be able to get our content and, and hit our proficiencies and our standards with our students, but it does look different. A year-long course versus an 18-week course. We recognize that going into it. And when it came to being able to, to manage schedules, when it came to managing a virtual schedule, and even when we came back in a hybrid model, you know, managing that sort of schedule, we felt like the, the, the number of transitions, the number of courses to manage, and still being able to offer the same courses, being able to offer the same number of credits, that this was the direction that we felt was gonna be best for, for most of our students and, and the direction we decided to go here. So you know, the structure would help with retaining information. You know, I think that's, I think that's a good question. It's, it's gonna be a little different. Go ahead, Johnny.
I get unmuted. I think it's important to note that schools across the country run on different schedules, and this isn't the first time that a school has operated on a four-by-schedule or on a different type of schedule. So we're not recreating the wheel here. We can look at best practices from our colleagues that run on trimester, trimester schedules, for example, and glean a lot of information about how they help support their students in a different type of learning model than what we at Silverton High School are traditionally used to. And so I think that's important to know and that this is an all-brand-new, that, that we have resources that can help support our staff through this transition. And to, to just remember to, that we're gonna do our, our best in that particular model, and, and and we have outstanding teachers who are gonna take care of our, our students in terms of that. And then I think our goal is always to focus on learning rather than just an accumulation of points. And I think the best thing that we can do in this type of environment is collaborate with our, our families as a whole and really work with our students to be trying to understand what is the, the actual learning that's taking place and, and helping us reteach some of that, that learning model. And so having support at home will be really important for that. And in telling your kids, "You're learning differently now," and supporting them.
And I think it's also important to keep in mind that when you talk about the different learning model, the difference between a 48-minute, seven-period, 48-minute period over seven periods versus an 85-minute period over four periods, then you're talking about the depth during that time, how, how much a student can engage in that, kind of the variety of things that a teacher can do in a class with students as well. So I, I appreciate Johnny, the, the comment there and the description of that. And I think you're right. It's just, it's a different learning model at this point right now. And I think it's also relative to the AP classes, the biliteracy seal, standardized testing, AP testing, these questions right here. Our response to that is we're trying to get all of this stuff in as early as we possibly can in the school year, and then in the second half of the year, offer as many supports as we can to make sure that students stay up on that, stay up on that, that knowledge, to make sure that they aren't losing that information, to make sure that they are, are retaining as much of, of those concepts as they possibly can as we get closer and closer to the AP tests. So that's, that's how the AP classes are going to work. We are trying to front-load all of that stuff. In fact, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Roth, we have front-loaded all of that. Is that correct?
Yeah, all of our AP classes are being offered in the, the first two quarters so that we make sure that we get through that content. We weren't able to make all of the Spanish four classes in the first two quarters and still be able to have as many students who forecasted for that class. So some of them are in the first two quarters, and then some of the Spanish four kids are in the second half of the school year. If your student is, for example, in Spanish four and is not a senior, they'll have other opportunities to take the seal of biliteracy, and, and we're gonna work to try and provide those opportunities as soon as we can. And then I would just say in close communication with Mrs. Roth, if that's a goal, so that we can make sure you're supporting your student there. I do think an important testing update is that at this point, the school does not meet the metrics in order to host the SAT day as we had planned in October or the PSAT. And so I think that is an important point of information for families, and we'll start to push that out as that, those dates get a little closer. But right now, our metrics prevent us from being able to have students in our building for longer than two hours for any reason, and both those tests take longer than two hours. And so know that Mr. Ortega and Ms. White, our junior and senior counselors, will be pushing out college board information. And again, I've said it in these town halls, and I'll continue to say it. Please make sure you're looking and working with the admissions officers at your intended universities to see what they are actually requiring. Many schools are not requiring the SAT or the ACT anymore. And so just be very diligent and watching admissions requirements for, for your intended institutions, and we'll help support you however we can.
Thank you, Johnny. Next question, how will choir and band work? We, obviously, that's going to be a very different look, and that's gonna be offered or, or I guess executed in a very different way. That said, we believe that our choir and band teachers are as good as they get in the state and believe that they're gonna give our students an outstanding experience in those courses and those activities. When it comes to exactly how that will look, I think that's probably a better question for those teachers. So I would encourage you to reach out to Mr. Howard Valenzuela and Mr. Patrick to ask them kind of what that's going to look like, but we will give them everything that, that they need to support them in those courses and believe that they're gonna give our students an outstanding experience as far as those are concerned. When it comes to the competitive side of those, Mr. Rice, are you aware of how that will look?
Things are still up in the air a little bit at the OSA side of things, but what we can, what we can guess at this point is, is you're looking more like a virtual situation. So whether that's a recording to present or something of that sort, yeah.
Thank you. How will the system accommodate for different learning needs and ways of learning? You know, the great thing about, number one, the, the extended periods, and number two, a, a virtual learning setting is that oftentimes there are a lot of different activities. There are a lot of different instructional, I guess, strategies that are incorporated as students go through this learning, these, these learning opportunities. And so when you talk about different accommodations or different learning styles for students, the visual learner, the kinesthetic learner, so on, so on and so forth, those are, those are usually addressed as far as the activities and, and opportunities that are given in a virtual environment. When students have an opportunity to break out, we don't expect, for instance, teachers to be in front of students for 85 minutes during a live synchronous opportunity. We expect teachers to be in front of students for 10, 15, 20 minutes, and then give students an opportunity to maybe have discussions, maybe go do some practice on some things, maybe work on a, on a different activity that's going to enhance the, the instruction that was just given to them. So we believe this will be addressed when it comes to the, the virtual learning environment. Will teachers be providing online instruction at set times for high school classes? We just got my daughter's schedule. She's a freshman. Has English, math concepts, and art, for example, can we count on regular online class times for her to get instruction in these areas? The answer is yes. They will be at nine o'clock and 11 o'clock on Tuesdays through Fridays. First and third period on Tuesdays and Thursdays, third and seventh, I'm sorry, fifth and seventh periods on Wednesdays and Fridays. Those will be the live synchronous opportunities for students to be meeting with their teachers. If, for whatever reason, students can't make it during those live synchronous opportunities, those opportunities will be recorded, and there will be other activities and other instructional opportunities for those students if they can't make it to those live opportunities. So again, we understand that this needs to be flexible for families and for students that aren't gonna be able to be online at the times that these particular classes are gonna be running their live synchronous opportunities. And so so we'll make sure that, that if, that if at those specific times they're not able to be there, that they, their, their instruction is not compromised due to that. What does the box hybrid print plan look like for the music programs, wind ensemble, concert band, jazz band? I hope we answered that when we just had that conversation in the last question. I think this is talking about for, for the distance learning part of it. But if we're talking about for when we come back in hybrid and having people, having students in person, it would look like having probably half the class at a time. For wind ensemble, for concert band, for jazz band, marching band is an activity, and I don't know exactly where we are at with that one. Mr. Rice might have a better answer for that. Choir, those require students to be spread out even further than they need to be spread out in a regular class. The good news is we have larger rooms for our band and choir rooms, so we're gonna be able to get more students into those rooms. But, but my guess is what we would end up doing is putting half on one day, half on the other day, and, and that's gonna be the best we're gonna be able to pull off when we get to the hybrid, the hybrid plan.
Go ahead, Mr. Roth. That a little bit, yeah. And so we scheduled students, and because of the limitations in their schedule, they typically can't have that for a full year. And so some of those classes are divided in half, some are divided actually in quarters. The maximum amount of students that we can put into any one of those classrooms is, is very small, actually. And, and so there's no way that in our current classroom, with the current metrics we have, that we would be able to put the entire concert choir, for example, in classroom at the same time. And so we're gonna have to just closely watch what the metrics say and lean on, as Mr. Lockett said, some exceptional and forward-thinking instructors who are gonna do a really great job creating the best experience they can for your students.
Thank you. Now that we have received schedules, I see that my student has signed up for ceramics and culinary in the first and second quarters. How will those classes work in distance learning? Will we need to purchase items for these classes, or will there be pickup available for things like clay? So I think it goes without saying that these courses are gonna look a lot different in distance learning and virtually than they would look if they were here cooking in our ovens, cooking on our stoves, spinning clay on our wheels. I, I think, I think it goes without saying that it's gonna look a lot different. That said, that these courses are, are offered, and we believe that our teachers are gonna be able to give our students a really good experience as far as those are concerned. When it comes to purchasing items for these courses, those, those will be provided. So whether it comes to a pickup and coming by and dropping off and picking up kind of a drive-through to pick up clay or, you know, cooking materials or these sorts of things, again, depending on what sorts of activities that the instructors have planned, those would not be things that families would be, or, or I suppose, costs that families would be incurring. Those would be covered by the school. So I hope that answers that question. And that really takes us to the end of the questions that were sent in beforehand. There are some questions that are coming up right now that we want to make sure that we get answered right now. So question number one, what was the thought behind only offering two classes per day and not matching with the hybrid in-person day would look like? Will they only be doing two classes a day when they get, when they go back in person? No. When they go back in person, the hybrid model will reflect students being in a classroom for four periods per day, but twice a week. The, the, you're saying three?
Yeah.
Online, correct. But they will have four, they will be tuning into four classes a day. When it comes to the distance learning, the reason that we felt like two classes per day was the way to go was it gives two live synchronous opportunities for our students each week in each class, and it doesn't put 16 live opportu, uh, live synchronous opportunities on our teachers as far as the week is concerned. So it's man, it's gotta be manageable for our teachers. It's gotta be manageable for our students. You know, again, learning a brand-new teaching and learning system at this point right now, it's gotta be something that is manageable for all parties involved here, and we felt like this was the most manageable for our teachers and for our students who could then do some of their applied learning online on days that they don't have live synchronous opportunities in a specific class. So, so that's, that was the, the reason for that. Since there will be recordings for all classes, will juniors and seniors be able to double up on classes that they need to move on from SHS? No, they will not be allowed to do that as far as a blanket rule is concerned. The reason for this is, is after the first quarter, if we jump back into a hybrid model and we have in-person learning, then doubling up on classes would, would create a situation where a student isn't going to be able to be in two fifth-period classes at the same time. And so so that's gonna be something that, you know, we, we have a master schedule. The master schedule provides for our students the, the best that it can provide. If, if we're able to offer our students, you know, all the opportunities that we're able to offer them, and it fits within their schedule, it's in their, within their level of learning, then, then we believe that's the best opportunity that we're gonna be able to give for our students at this point right now. How will attendance work? We're still working that out. I can tell you right now that attendance is, we, we are required to take attendance for every student, for every class, every single day. So you know, how that looks, you know, does it look like a student needing to be in a live synchronous opportunity? It doesn't. ODE's guidance as far as attendance is concerned has been that there's a very broad definition of what it means to attend something on a specific day. That could be an email with a teacher. It could be a, a turning in an assignment. It could be tuning into a live synchronous opportunity. It could be really a, a number of different ways for a student to be kind of checking in and, and showing they are attending on that particular day. So how it looks on our end, as far as our teachers taking that attendance, we're still working through that process right now. With what you just said about teachers only really teaching for 15, 20 minutes per class period, I'm very concerned that students will actually learn what they need to learn. So the instruction isn't going to just be through live instruction from a teacher. That instruction is gonna come through a number of different activities that are pushed out online. And that could be videos. It could be readings. It could be, it could be a number of different activities. It could be discussion boards. So it's, it's not, students aren't just learning things as a teacher stands and delivers things in front of them. There are a lot of other ways that students absorb information, get information, and so, and, and then really learn that information as well, learn those concepts. So I, I, I think it's also important to note that I wouldn't say that a teacher necessarily sits and, and talks for 30, 40, 50 minutes in front of a student on any daily basis here live at school either. They might get 20, 15, 20 minutes of instruction before they go off into an activity, and that And that activity could oftentimes lead last two or three days. And so the students do a lot of independent work even while they're here at school. And so I just, I don't know if there's anything to add to that, Mrs. Pharaoh?
Okay. No, I think you answered that great. I was going to say the same thing, even, even when they're in our building, learning looks very different than a teacher just talking directly to them. And I think they're going to do a great job once we get into the system and students have an opportunity. Learning online requires your student to be more of an independent learner though. And, and that's something that those discussions should start involving at home is this is going to require a lot of self-management and we're going to be tracking that in the school, but I don't, I don't think it, it hurts to start those conversations now and thinking about what, what you can do as a family and home learning coaches and, and students to support this transition.
What is the likelihood that we will go back to in-person learning and teaching? I, I simply don't know the answer to that. I, I, I was trying to think of a really clever answer in my head right there about being a betting man and these sorts of things. I, I simply don't have an answer to that question. All, all we can say at this point right now is that we do not meet the metrics really anywhere in the state to be able to go back to in-person learning at this point right now. As soon as we do hit those metrics, you know, I think everybody wants the same thing. We all want to get our kids back in school. We all want to make sure that we're giving our, our students, our parents, the best opportunity, best learning opportunities, the best educational experience we can possibly give our kids. And that, that is the desire. That's what we want to get back to and we'll get back to as soon as we possibly can. But, but we are subject to the state metrics. We are subject to guidance by ODE, the Oregon Health Authority, the governor's office. And, and at this point right now, we simply don't meet those metrics. And that's, you know, that's the best answer that I can give at this point. I'll give a little, just a little bit of time at this point right now in case anybody wants to throw another question in there, but it looks like the questions have been, have been asked at this point. We did anticipate a little bit shorter presentation this evening. It's not a whole lot of new information that we're throwing out there and really kind of wanted to revolve around your questions. So if there are other questions that you'd like, please feel free to ask them. Otherwise, will grading still be proficiency based grading? In the past, the kids have had RIE for retakes, et cetera. Will that still take place or is that built into the schedule? I'm wondering if the question is whether or not RIE is built into the schedule. Really, the RIE, every single day, teachers are going to have office hours to be able to answer student questions. If there are students that are struggling with a concept, are struggling with, with meeting a certain proficiency, teachers will have those conversations with them during their office hours and hopefully be able to, to help students through that, get them over the hump as far as that's concerned. There may be times that during office hours, teachers will tell students, it looks like, you know, several of us had, had a little bit of trouble with this particular concept. I'll be, you know, holding office hours at this time. It'd be a good idea to show up at this point and we'll go over this concept again. So to be able to host a number of students in their office hours at that time, so it's not just individual students. But, but we see a lot of flexibility in how all of this works and how we reach students and how we have conversations with students and how students are learning and absorbing this material. So, so yeah, I think there will be a lot of opportunities for interventions and extensions just through the structure, just through the, the way that the schedule is structured, because there is a lot of flexibility for students to be able to reach the teachers and for teachers to reach out to students and families to be able to reinforce certain concepts. So. Other questions? I would encourage you to reach out if you do have further questions or if there's something that comes to you a little bit later to, to shoot us an email. Give us a phone call, however it works best for you. Please just let us know what those questions are. Again, for us, it's wanting to, to ease as much anxiety as we possibly can. We know this is not easy. We know it's not difficult. But we also, you know, look forward to the opportunity to try something new. And hopefully just everybody surprises themselves in how great this ends up going off. It looks like, was there one more question that just popped up? If Silverton High School has kept the graduation requirements at 25.5 credits, how are all of the kids supposed to complete that with such a shorter schedule? Can you explain further? Yeah. So actually, with a block schedule, there is the opportunity to actually acquire more credits. And the way that we've crafted our, our block schedule with, with classes, what would normally be a year-long class that would get you one full credit, that actually now takes place in half the time. So you're able to get a, a one full credit course in 18 weeks when it comes to the increased instructional minutes during that time. So we've shortened the, the time down as far as the weeks are concerned, but doubled the minutes as far as the instructional time in the class is concerned. So, so really students have the exact same amount of, or same opportunity to earn the same number of credits this year as they would in our, in our regular traditional seven period schedule.
Mr. Lockett, that includes other opportunities such as zero period jazz band, for example. So exactly the same opportunity to earn credit as, as we have in the past. We'll make sure students are getting their graduation requirements and prepared for their next steps, whatever those might be.
Last question, how is engineering and mechanical technology going to work? Oops, my light just went out. Yeah. Motion sensors. How is engineering and mechanical technology going to work? It's going to work the same as, as all of our other classes. It's going to be virtual opportunities. There is, and Johnny, you might know this guidance a little bit better than I do, but there is some guidance relative to CTE courses that give some allowances for students to be able to come in and very limited numbers. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, there is some provisions because the state recognizes that some of those classes require hands-on learning. It's pretty hard to teach welding virtually. And there are ways. But in order to progress to more advanced levels, students really need to apply the skills that they're learning. So we are exploring those. I've also been reaching out to some of our local community colleges, Shemecada, for example, is all online fall term, but they're allowing small groups in for some lab time. And so Mr. Towery and Mr. Rice and myself have been communicating with our partners at Shemecada to see how they're doing it and how we might be able to model that when the opportunity presents itself. At this point, we don't anticipate being able to bring students in even for small group instruction until at least October.
Thank you. How have students received schedules? I see people asking about their kids' schedule specifically. So over the last couple of days, we've been doing a drive-through registration. Seniors were on Tuesday, juniors were today, tomorrow sophomores, Friday will be freshmen. There's four stops that are taking place as we go through the registration. The first stop is to drop off materials, books, Chromebooks, anything like that that didn't get dropped off from last year. The next stop is turning in paperwork. That paperwork should have been mailed out to you. You should receive that already. But it's, it's just pertinent information when it comes to contact information, email addresses, mailing information, these sorts of things. The third stop is their, their photo, to get their school picture on the third stop. And the fourth stop is they receive their schedule. So I'm sure that's how some folks are able to refer to their students' specific schedule.
And if, if for, by chance anyone missed their day, they're always welcome to come on the other days as well. So if you were a senior and you missed that registration day, don't hesitate to come down. We'd love to see everybody this week if possible.
Thank you. Do the kids have their core classes spread out through the year? That depends on how their schedule plays out. So it's, you know, Mrs. Pharaoh, do you have a better answer as far as that's concerned? Their, their classes are plugged into a master schedule and.
Yeah, some of the classes are only offered on the first two quarters. Some core classes are offered in the latter. Some are offered at different times throughout the year. Counselors hand build all those schedules and, and really tried to look individually. And if they saw a way to spread the load, they did. And if there wasn't a way to do that, then we will continue to support students as the years go on. But it, it really depends on where they fall on the master schedule. And, and as we're thinking about the master schedule, we, we build that based on students' first choices and forecasting. And then we run what's called a conflict analysis and try and get any conflicts in the schedule down. I think the highest conflicts for any class we had in this master schedule was six, which is pretty good. And, and that requires, that's not characteristic to this COVID situation. There, there are always conflicts for some students, whether we have seven class periods or four class periods. We do our best to, to make a schedule that is conducive to student choice and then balance that out so that teachers have equitable course loads. And so it's a, it's a balance for sure. But if you have concerns about those, there's directions on how to access the counselor to ask more questions about schedules.
Awesome. Well, once again, that exhausts all of our questions. If you do have further questions or if any of these comments, you know, kind of jarred some new thoughts that may not hit you till, till an hour later, please feel free to email, give us a call. You know, stop us in the store or whatever. We'd be happy to have those conversations with you. So thank you all so much for being here. We look forward to seeing you and your students as you come through our drive-through and register with us. But we'll be talking again soon. Next week, we'll be doing these at six o'clock every Wednesday until you hear otherwise. So thank you so much for being here. Have a great night.